I guess we'll call the meeting to order tonight, Wednesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. And I'll be looking for a motion on the minutes from January.
And just like the one I just ended up, Amy reported that she was entertaining doing whatever about the last meeting when we adjourned and didn't adjourn and talk more, she can't do that. So if you guys got the original minutes, I just did one where I took out that last sentence and changed time until 20 minutes sooner. So you can, it's up to you as to what you think is best.
Are we going to do a motion on the revised minutes?
Whichever, whichever what? Somebody, whatever you want to, whatever you want to move, I guess.
I'll make a motion on the revised minutes that we have.
A second. Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any requests to appear before the council? And then I guess she will have your report.
At the, we're going to revise those on the 17th. Police Department, we're going to go over some services, while I'm recording this, we're going to arrest a person called substance. We conducted another investigation, that's a child protection complaint. Breakdown of the causes as such, one calculated incident, three child protection, no protection, three suspicious activity, nine traffic stops, one driving complaint, one animal complaint, five assist agency, 20, we're going to listen direct patrol, four public assistance welfare check. And the rest of the calls are information on and such. Civil County was holding a dispatch in two calls, we had savings for the city. As far as personnel, Officer Schmidt is going from full-time to part-time. I conducted interviews for the full-time position and I'm pleased to advise everybody that I was able to find a very good candidate. I made him a conditional job offer. His name is Jason Lawrence. He currently lives in Arlington. Graduated from New Minnesota Country School here in Henderson, actually lived in Henderson. His family from around here. I'm a veteran, served eight years before the discharge in the US military, was deployed twice. Was a military police work there. Currently, he is working at the Civil County Jail as a correctional officer. Been there for four years. Did his background, nothing but good things said about him. Very liked him on the law enforcement community here. I think he's going to be a real nice addition to the police department and he'll, he'll do well here. So with that said, I also made a conditional job offer to Eric Carroll's, who is local. He used to work for Henderson Police Department. I believe for 18 years before. He's currently working in the sex offender program in St. Peter, but still wants to come back. Expressed interest in coming back as a part timer here. Recently restored his police license. So with that, I would recommend the city council to make a motion on approving those candidates for a full-time and part-time position.
So will the full-time position be doing the water and sewer like Alex was until that funding will come from there?
Yeah, whenever that happens. I guess if I understand it correctly, Alex will transition out. Alex will continue to do water and sewer until this new person would come on. Then Alex will transition out of water and sewer. Or and then eventually would come back. He still, he would still come back here as a part-time police officer, not a water and sewer person. And then the other person would be a water and sewer person. Whatever, that's two hours. But basically, when you're, when you're saying this, you're approving, if you do approve this, he's a typically a six dollar a week police person and a two hour a week water and sewer person.
A day.
Oh, we did. Yeah, 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 whatever. So 10 hours, 10 hours a week typically, water and sewer and 30 hours a week bond person typically.
So is Alex going to train this guy in under what?
Water and sewer? James would train him in water.
My only concern is when you look at that information you gave us tonight about the budget and where we're going to be sitting in December. I, I, for reason, no reason other than that, we ask, we have to start looking at cutting rather than continually adding and adding and adding.
Well, we got the extra $30,000 that we're saving on the office personnel though, Amy.
Well, we've already upped that to about 50.
50, how?
Well, during the, the last chamber meeting, Paul's not here tonight. I don't know if he'll chime in or not. He offered up money for us to have as a chamber representative that we would be willing to pay for that. But that wasn't at the meeting or it wasn't approved. He just said it at the chamber meeting. But if that were the case, and then with Diane and with building permits, we're already up to 50,000 with a Walmart greeter, non-Walmart greeter.
I guess I'm totally, based on if you get approved in budget, you don't, you got $2,000 a month for 12 months, so you got $24,000.
Yep. And then you got the extra building permit money.
What, what excuse?
Uh, he's going to charge 20.
$20 for 80 permits, so take that. And, and any of the permits that are, some of those, if they're not new residential permits, they, they get the, that $20 gets paid back. So let's assume we have 10 residential permits and the other 70 are, are furnaces or whatever they are. I mean, which says it's not going to be more than 30. So we're talking $600. So, so, so far what we've increased the budget by is $24,600. Alright.
I wrote down what Paul had proposed here to the chamber.
That's got nothing to do with this budget. I mean, that's that hasn't, that hasn't been approved here as a, as a budget.
No, it wasn't even brought on the table. Wasn't he just talking about the revolving loan fund, encouraging the chamber to apply for it? No, he was talking about the city position and, and the deduction of it. Okay.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, no, that, that's a mischaracterization of the conversation. When the chamber was discussing what was going on in terms of the savings, Doug Thomas said he'd like to see 20,000 of that go towards an economic development person rather than like a full-time Mount Walmart greeter, Lindsay type person. And I said, I absolutely, I'd support that idea. I think it's a great idea. I didn't commit the city to any funding. I didn't suggest that I was going to bring it forward. I said I'd be supportive of an idea like that. That's all.
Well, again, I'll say, if you look at that projection that we got tonight that Amy and I looked at at the end of the year, we're $500,000 in red. We have to figure out where we're going to come up with money. And we can't keep spending.
But I missed that too. What $500 in the red?
On the spreadsheet.
On the spreadsheet, it showed a negative 500,000 for December. Right?
Yeah.
No, there's no, I have no idea what you're looking at.
Well, I'll say what we're looking at. Yeah, we're looking at 562,000, 069.03, December then, December.
Yeah, right. That's that's what you're looking at is the balance. Okay, that's the wrong report. What, what you've got right now is that just didn't cross, cross out. There's no, there's no numbers in there. I just printed this out here. I just, I just did this a little bit before. So what you've got right now for a balance after, after January is 1,064, 669,494, 5064. Where it carries through, one of those in there, one of those formulas is just wrong. It's just, that's supposed to be like a zero wherever that, somewhere along in there, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be zeros all the way along the clock. I mean, there's, there's no revenues or expenses in February or January. I mean, it's February through. So there's nothing here projecting a negative balance at all. I would, I would, and there's, everything that we've got right now would project whatever we're saving on that, that staff person. So everything would project now that we're $40,000 ahead in the budget, not, not 500 some thousand behind. And I, I'm glad you guys discussed it, but I, I wish, I mean, making some kind of statement like that, that's totally off and, and trying to carry that forward, that's pretty disappointing that you guys would even do that without, without. I mean, that's, yes, that's a major 562,000. Just, you're approving a January report. You're looking at a December one. There's no projections in there.
We're looking at the 2020 bank reconciliation report. According to that, December is a negative 562,000 dollars. That's what we were looking at.
No, you're looking at the January, you're looking at the
Yes, I'm looking at this one.
Okay, you're
So am I looking at it wrong?
You're looking at the balance of 1,064, 1,0064, 494, 88. Everything after that, no, no, on the January 2001, 21, sir. I guess I'm looking at a different report.
Yeah. I have the 2020.
Yes. And there's, and there's the balance, 1,0599.
Okay, so we were looking at that.
That's right. You know, I don't know what you were looking at the first of December. The balance right now, after the bonds came in, is 1,0599, 671,90.
Okay.
That's a I mean, you look at December, you look at December 1st, the last year's balance, not it. And the other report shows the December 31st of 2021 balance.
Okay, well, I apologize then. But
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty damn disappointing that, that you would be, some of, some of you guys be doing this for 10 years and then, and then take, take a look at that and get it totally mischaracterized. I mean, if that's, if that's what, if that's what this is going to turn into is, is people looking for BS to find some stuff that's not even true. When we were just across the hall three minutes ago and then bring up something off the wall, it's, it totally sucks.
Well, if it's not true, why is it presented to us?
What's, what's, what's presented to you?
Why move numbers even there then?
Because there's a, there's an error, right? There's an error on, I mean, you can, you can see that there's a, that there's a, if you're, if you're looking at it, 1,069,494, 68. If there's no numbers in between, I would think that that's pretty obvious that there are, I mean, you want to see the, I could do a report if that
No, I thought it was the projected where we were going to be.
It was just a misunderstanding, man.
Well, anyway.
So basically, we're in the black because we have a bond, correct? You said because we got the bond, we're at 1.599671.
The bond period would change for projects from the past four years.
Yep.
And that's, and that's, and that's what that was a financial plan two years ago. That we were going to overspend in 2019 and 2020 until a bond came in during, something during 2020. Once, once people figured out what projects were going to be underpaid.
Okay.
So, and that, that bond is already cash flow with, with reports that I guess I, that I gave out in September and January, I can, if that's, if that's what we're, we are, I don't, that's why they've been I'm totally astounded here that obviously whenever I present something, any kind of financial stuff, nobody pays attention. Because, because I had those, I had that information out there before as to what our tax limit is, what our bond payments are, where everything is there, where everything, what, where everything was in January and, and why you think that would change in February. It's totally, totally, totally gorgeous.
Okay, so I'm going to say this. I am new to the council. I am new to city finance. I have had no training. So don't get upset with me for us making a comment.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I'm not
Give me some training on any explained city budgeting.
I, I guess that's, yeah, I'm just waiting.
Well, I mean, I'm not asking for extra money. This is just what I started the conversation with, just asking the council.
So basically, this is something that would have been in the budget anyway.
The new, you know, candidates for
Do you need a motion for Alex going from full-time to part-time? Or just a motion on?
Oh, yes, you know, all of those, because right now Alex is still considered a full-time employee.
Okay.
So yes, we'll, you will, he would automatically lose that characterization once he got under $30 a week for a while. But this essentially would affect if February 16th, he would become a part-time employee, which would be, yes. So yes, you would need that. Then, then if you're going to hire Eric, you would need a motion recommending that he would do that. And then you would have to decide where he that with, if you're compensating, if you're going to put him there. I mean, whether he's a 1910 or whether he that were, were, what would be that were Alex that now, which is 1965. And then you would all need a motion to decide whether you're going to hire other person.
Alright. So let's start with a motion to make Alex part-time from full-time to part-time.
I'll make the motion.
Starting February 16th.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And then we will look for a motion for Mr., excuse me, Mr. Leonard's to become a full-time officer in place of Alex Schmidt. And he will transition into water and sewer at that time. Any discussion? Or motion?
I'll make a motion higher.
This is on Chief Jason Leonard's.
Yes. Was that the one you were?
Yes.
For the full-time. I'll second.
So that basically would be 75, 25 for 75 of all, 25.
Same as you're doing right now. It's a different name.
And he would be hired at the, the 1965 same Alex, same average.
Now, this is before I started or was on this council. You guys used to do it different with the water bills or checking the water system. I understand it was some kind of savings by going this route, Alex doing the checking the water or whatever he's doing from beforehand. How it was done?
That's why, I don't know if there was any, it was, there was
I mean, what was the caution before when you had somebody else doing it before Alex? Was James doing it or?
No, we build a lot of the Well, the sewer part, the sewer was doing it. So yeah, there was, there was a major, there were the major savings from one of those struggles or 12 and a half percent. There were the main, there were the major savings when, from, from there because they were charging $800.
Right. That's what I'm getting at.
So Steve has a motion on the table to approve Mr. Leonard's for the full-time position and part-time water. Is there a second?
I already have a second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Alright. And now, what, what wage did you offer Eric?
Where, where did we sit on that? Are, are you voting on? Did what did we?
I don't know. Paul voted. I guess I didn't vote. I'm an aye.
Okay, okay.
That would be unanimous.
We, we didn't talk about this in the earlier panel. There's some question as to whether Paul can vote or not. Did you want to explain this?
Technically, Paul is not supposed to be by Zoom unless we posted it, that he was going to be at a different location. I don't, I'm fine with him zooming in. I don't know if anybody else is, but technically we were supposed to post it that he was off location.
Well, it's already unanimous for whether or not.
Well, it's three to one or four to one. Right? Because you're, you're voting. Randy, you voted?
Oh, you opposed.
I voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's three or four to one. We'll decide whether it's three or four.
And then Eric's, you offered Eric
A conditional job offer, correct?
At 1965.
Eric's basically going to be doing holidays, sick days, helping us out with roll-ins, special events, something.
At the 1965 or the, that's the going rate, right?
That's something that, you know, would have to be discussed with law. She wants to, I guess, do that.
Isn't that what all the officers make?
I'm fine with doing 1965. It's, you know, the budget.
See, we really, I didn't change a lot. You know, we only got Lawler right now, you know, and I didn't change, you know, he only worked like one day a month. I didn't change him out to 1910. We changed Eric to 1910. Alex to 1965, but whether, we also said he was a full-time employee too. So I guess that's kind of up to you as to whether you think to go in rate or Eric should give 1965 or put him back to 1910.
Well, I think it would go across the table whether you're part-time or full-time. I mean, first, that, that's my vote. Would be if part-time officers are getting, I mean, Officer Lawler shouldn't get less just because he works one day or
And spend for
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree, but we never, we never brought it up.
I'll make a motion that we bring on Eric at the same wage that Officer Lawler's at.
So we have a motion for
Lawler's at what?
Thank you. Well, he hasn't worked. He will be at 1965 now. We'll put him all at 1965.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just to clarify, we're not offering to the full-time person, we're not offering benefits or anything. I mean, it's just, it's the, it's the work, it's the hourly salary. And both these motions, it's contingent upon them passing their psychological and their physical. You've, you've got them scheduled right now, correct?
Well, they were supposed to get scheduled. They were supposed to get that. I mean, this is going to be, yeah, this is going to be done. It's just a matter of time. Eric already passed this medical. We just wait, you know, he needs to contact, so does Jason to contact psychological firms for, for those evaluations. And once it's done, then it's going to be, the offer is going to be final. They're going to be declared, meet all the requirements of the post board. So then I can make them the final job offer.
Did Alex have a benefits package? No.
I just want to publicly thank Alex for his service to the city of Henderson. I wish him the best in here.
Another thing I was going to ask is, I looked at our city code and it appears that the probation period for all of the city employees is from three to six months. However, generally speaking, for police departments, it's about a year. I mean, there are special circumstances. People come in with experience or supervisory position. But I would like to kind of get a motion on that so we can have that probation extended to a year just for police departments because this is just a common practice. And it has been done for pretty much universally across, across the country, one year probation. For some reason, it's six months for, for city employees. I guess, you know, you would be fine for somebody working in other capacity, but as I said, for law enforcement, I think that would be more beneficial if you have one year probation, which is common practice. So we would like to get a motion on that. Is that important?
It's in the personnel policy.
It's in the personnel policy, yes.
City personnel policy. I don't, I don't know if there, is there a specific police personnel policy for both that have, no?
Not just, it's just city.
So you would be changing the city ordinance, breaking it down between city employees.
I guess it would be adding something new to it, which not only changing the ordinance, but kind of be a term with condition of specific employment. But the only other thing about it is that these guys are all at Will City. I'm an at Will employee. Dimitri's an at Will employee. Basically, you can, if, if they got a year, six months probation, you can, you can, you can get, even if even Biden's, you know, unless you sign a contract with somebody, you can, you can get, you can, they might fight it, but I mean, you can, you can, you can make a motion to fire it right now. You know, so it may be, it may be a good creationary thing, but
Well, it's just the way, the way I read. Where is it that I didn't find? Well, this is, this is Minnesota statute. This is not, yeah. So even Minnesota statute, it says 4410 probation period. The probation period for a peace officer is 12 months. So this is, this is the Minnesota statute, 44.10 probation period for employees qualified students. So I know it looks like Minnesota statute, but it's not, it hasn't, so
That probably
And there will be a contradiction between our policy and what that statute says. That's why, you know, I just kind of read, yeah, I stumbled upon the probational period being from three to six months. Yeah, I think somehow, I don't know, for, who the avenues are kind of changing it or not any, I guess. Maybe a city council motion on that would kind of clarify it.
See to that or when we're doing the codifying, we can just, we can, we're, we're going to be reviewing all the ordinances over the next three months. We can just change everything to a year if that's what you want to do.
I think that would be better.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll just write that down as another one, change that, that we just change everything to a year, you know, and the personnel, that's the problem.
Do we still need a motion on that or just mark it down as a?
I don't, you can, if you want, it's a little longer.
Alright, I guess.
I'll make a motion that when we codify the city ordinances, that that should be changed to a year.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Dimitri?
Well, I'm just going to continue with my
Yeah.
So this was as far as personnel goes. Every member of the police department is up to date on their training. Equipment management has 23,007 miles on it. Next goal, 24,000 miles. Next goal, twenty-four thousand miles, six hundred, that completed eighty thousand two ninety-two, uh, it's gonna be about, uh, two and a half thousand miles next oil change. All equipment is working, we didn't have any expenses for this time period. Uh, we just got, uh, second round of Corona shots, so, uh, I will set something up for new employers also with the county. Human services, um, health services rather, uh, all of the post requirements are met, I just updated. Use of force yet another update to use of force policy with that, so, um, other than that, I. The, the personnel issue is the biggest.
So we're changing oil on these, uh, police units every two thousand?
Three thousand. No, this is just, this is like the current, in my report, just to clarify, also, this is, uh, this is the current mileage.
Oh.
They, this is when it's due to change.
I see.
Yeah, because when it comes to like, say, twenty-four thousand six hundred thirty-seven or around there, let's say twenty-four hundred six hundred miles.
I am.
And then I'm gonna put next goal change to, and this is just, yeah, I just updated the mileage. So you go every month for the reports.
Alright, thank you. And.
Before Allison, uh, Alex, you want to come up? Before you pull it out of here, in my later report, uh, and I have, I even have to mention it to Dimitri, but I haven't even asked, I haven't asked Alex. If Alex is now part-time employee, he's gonna be working water and sewer for kind of as long as he can or until the new person comes on, but. It seems everything is playing towards, uh, the state superintendent, park superintendent being off on medical leave for at least, uh, for the next probably ten. Ten weeks probably, and so, uh, if, if it's something you're, we've got, I've got some people lined up to do snow and all that stuff that I'll show or bring up here later. But doing some, would, uh, doing any of that, yeah, like, uh, I don't, you know, what, whatever, kind of just street kind of things, I don't know, picking up garbage cans, uh. General low-level maintenance, that kind of stuff, if that anything you'd be interested in doing.
I, well, I guess we're general maintenance, I guess what would that entail?
Just talk to breathe, but, uh.
Sure.
Uh, kind of grabbing around and the stuff needs fixed, fixed or, you know, whatever, just, uh, fix, fix the beat into one ton. And looking, looking around a couple, couple three days a day, or something comes up that, uh, that would need, if you're not working for Gaylord, something will come up. I give you a call, can you go out and check this?
To be honest, I don't want to make a commitment right here that I guess I'd rather, I'd check with Bruce first to see exactly what he does and what kind of, that would entail. I'm not opposed to it, but I'd have to check with my other chief over at Gaylord because I don't want to have their, a conflict with there because I don't know. While I'm on probation with Gaylord, it'll be, I can't work for another agency, I guess I'd have to get that clarified, that's just outside of employment in general. Or however that he wants to, so like, I can't really give a definitive answer.
Yeah, this would, not, the water and sewer would feel me, the, the new person would be doing that, this would be, this would be part-time, uh, part-time speed.
Yeah, I'll, let me get, I'm not opposed to it, but let me just do some checking.
And how long is your probation in Gaylord?
My full is six months, I've already done my, uh, part-time probationary period for the year, but this would be, at least according to policy, as I understand it, that going from part-time to full-time, it would be probationary period is six months. So it, it was approved as six months and they said that they were going to discuss it at that point, if they want me to go the whole year for X, Y, Z reason, or if they're okay with just.
So you can't work for another agency during your probation period?
Correct, yes.
So you won't be here for the six months, the next six months?
Yes.
But you're, are you, but are you, you're not sure of police or are we police department only, or whether you can do other stuff or you don't know?
Right, yeah, it's, it's for, I'm, I can't work for a police, another police agency in general, so if I'm working for Gaylord, maybe while I'm on a probationary for six, for six months, I can't work for Henderson as another police officer for any of the departments. But I don't know if that extends to just employment in general, and that's just what I.
Well, I think instead of taking, going from full-time to part-time, you need to take some sort of leave because you won't be available for work for the next six months.
Right, I did put a, a question there.
Right now, he's still, that probably won't, that's, that's kind of where I was going with this, that's, right now, he's gonna do water and sewer until he starts up in Gaylord and go and do work. So it, so that's an important thing for, for water and sewer, and that's kind of what I was, where I was getting here, if he gets clarification from his employer, that, I know he did work police here. But if, but if Gaylord would, would let him work, uh, streets and parks for us while he's doing police, then, then I would hope he can stay on part-time and we don't have to fire him and all, you know, that, that kind of stuff. Not, you know, contract it out of, otherwise it's, uh, like, yeah, it seems simple, but otherwise it's me or you or James or somebody, you know, it's, I, I don't want to, I don't really want to pay one of our contractors forty dollars an hour or whatever it would be to go around and pick up, uh, four things.
I think that's a good idea, um, you know, that Alex can get back to within a couple of days, then that will, we won't have to put him on leave and just transfer from one department to the other department.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, that's fine, I'm not opposed, I just gotta do some double check.
Yeah, and I want to bring it up and it'll settle all the time, fire the team now and the next, the next meeting, so yeah, he could be gone altogether, he could be working water force, he could be working sewer force, he could be working park force, he could be working stage force, we don't, we don't know.
Like I said, I guess it's my intent, because I do like Henderson, like work at here, I think I've established a lot of relationships around here, where it's, like I said, I, it's my intent to come back to assist part-time. But I guess it's kind of sort of, it's, it's my intent to come back. It's kind of.
Should we amend that motion then to say, uh, something more like whatever he works out with you versus going from full-time to part-time?
I think just leave it like it is.
Okay.
For now without getting this, uh.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to approve a part-time fill-in on?
Yeah, I think maybe that's how I would amend it, is that he's still, he's, he's still water and sewer, but add, add the part-time, uh. Ba- basically reclassify not as a water and sewer only, but as a maintenance worker, it's in our, in our case, a maintenance worker is across board, I mean, it, it could be putting light bulbs in here, it could be fixing that heating thing back there, it could be cleaning up garbage. It could be whatever, whatever we need to be done.
I would amend my motion.
So that, so you'd have a job right now, put that to the.
You read my mind, thank you.
So I would amend that, uh, to include that.
I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second to amend Alex's, uh, part-time status as to a maintenance, um, slash water. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried, and now we will move to Allison.
Thank you. I'm aware that Curry writes the complaint, uh, to the city regarding a plague, employing state employees in Henderson. And I think all of you are aware of what it says, and the result of that was the customer to do research as well. Um, what is free speech and what is speech without protection by the constitution, right? First amendment, I have, uh, provided to council with a memo, and I assume that all of you have read it. That, that is a result of my research, it doesn't take long to find, clearly protected speech, um, it is on the edge of what might be unprotected speech. But it is protected speech, and that's the conclusion of attorneys from the United States, this plague applies, it's just the best, it's like, it's flying all over the United States right now. Um, others similar to that as well, so. During a question, compose them, but that's a result of the research and I recommend that the city recognize that plague as an exercise upon its free speech. That's right. Now, in addition to that, I am aware that there was a dog issue which was, um, investigated by law enforcement. Uh, and in my mind has been addressed through law enforcement, but, uh, I know that the council is probably going to be in a position in the future and probably in the near future to revisit the dog ordinance with regard to leash laws. And, and speaking to Lon, now, I, I think it is advisable for the council to put that table in until we have all of the, the ordinances in their new codified form. Um, it's all, it's already clear because, uh, we've taken a peek, that the people who are doing the codifications are, are actually updating language. So, uh, once we have that, we should all be prepared to take a look at those ordinances which may already be here, are pretty antiquated and need to be, um, examined with a little more care. So, that's what I would suggest we do with regard to citizens concerned about leash or unleash laws. That's, I think that's all, is there anything else, Lon, that you want me as a city attorney to address?
What's the timeline, um, that these will all be finished?
I think it's in the next two or three months, two months.
We got, we got that letter last month, it said fifty days, but now thirty, now it's down to thirty days, so between now and the March meeting, I mean, I, I think unless they're totally delayed, we should. Uh, I guess it's a good, it's a good timing now to figure out, hey, how do you want to discuss this, I mean, it's, I don't know if you looked at the, the thing on my desk, but it's, it's that tall, front and back, you know, so, uh. Right, right now, they don't, they haven't sent it out on any kind of PDF or anything, right? I, and, and, you know, I think we decided last night not to have Allison look at it fully until, until we get the next version, because right now, it just went, the next version is supposed to have, okay, it changed to a hundred and fifty pages for a hundred and fifty sections. And this is why they're key, and now it's based on this ordinance, you know, it can do whatever, so that ultimately, like, it's done, then you just click on it, it's kind of like Google even if it's in handbook, you just click on the site and it goes to wherever it goes, so.
And I think that, you know, probably just have to go small, and, uh, you know, if you want to look at the leash law, well then, you know, maybe we'll discuss that or discuss a certain amount at each meeting, or, I mean, there's no way we're gonna.
They do want, they want the comments within a little over fifty days, you know, so that, uh, because after, after fifty days, that it's gonna, that time limit is gonna expire and then they're gonna go into final consent mode. Then once it goes into final consent mode, then, then if we change anything, we gotta, we gotta basically start over again, you know, we had to do stuff for, you know, so with that. We haven't talked, you know, nobody really wanted to, uh, settle on this rental ordinance and a couple of other things, I mean, to me, within the next sixty to eighty days. You either gotta decide whether you cross these things off or live totally and we're not gonna talk about them all, I mean, all summer, I mean, it's, to me, it's gonna be totally foolish. You have four months from now, we got a brand-new, uh, thirty-five thousand dollar ordinance, you know, with whatever, and now, two weeks into it, we say, oh, that's, now we gotta get it back in here and change it. I mean, I, I think you want to get it all done, because, because once it, once it goes in, Allison can review and do whatever, we're basically out of it here in the office, it's fired, changing it. Now, it's posted on the legal city website and it's posted on the state of Florida website, so everything's gotta get seen through, through that, you know, so.
I thought on the rental ordinance when we made that motion that it was not to pursue it.
Done, okay.
That we voted that.
Okay, okay, and that's fine, and it's done. Uh, but yeah, right now, the only three, the only three that I've got is the dog thing that we preliminarily have looked at, just a little bit that was there. Amy had brought up the number of members of the library board, and now we've got, uh, probationary period stuff. And I, and I, just off the top of my head, I can't, you know, Steve has brought up the whole economic development thing, so if, if that's supposed to be in there, I told we could at least look at it or include it or whatever, it's all, you know, that we forget about that too. And, and I can't think of any, I mean, have we done other stuff that we've just kind of set aside for the past six months, three months, or is Amy, Amy, Steve, you got any other stuff you say, the library needed, the dog?
No, I'd have to go through and look at more of the ordinances to see.
Do you think we should have a couple of workshop nights to go through when they send us that thing we gotta look at in six, within sixty days?
If you, if you want to go through it thoroughly, probably, I guess, I don't know how else you would, uh, unless you, I'd say unless, unless you want me to, and I can, you know, make enough copies and send it all out and everybody look at it individually, but. But, but usually then, I mean, if you're gonna look at everything individually, uh, Amy might have one thing, you might have another, and now, and now we got five people with, uh, a list of stuff and, and, you know, and now, now we got a city needing to figure out what they're listening to, so. Doesn't bother me.
I mean, I think we should have a couple of workshop nights to just go through it.
So when they codify them, are they gonna have the changes like highlighted in red?
But it's the way I, the way I read this, and you need to read it, you need to read it different than I do, uh.
So it says it's gonna be printed on blue paper.
I got it on blue paper, that's ready here. Grabbing, just I got that.
Because if it is highlighted or the changes are really, um, noticeable, it'll be easier to go through them.
Yeah.
Because then you're basically just reviewing the changer.
But so, but that second sentence, second paragraph, what do you think that means? You'll receive a legal editorial report in approximately sixty days, so I agree with Mark.
So they're gonna send it to you as a PDF or electronic thing that you could just forward to us?
Well, this one was, this one is a big blue.
Okay.
It says the report is set up in a way to expedite the process and help me to catch actual timeline, so it must be.
But, I think, Allison, what is, uh, what is a legal and editorial report?
No idea. No idea, I, I would guess, I mean, just reading this, I think that they're saying. If, if some of the ordinance literally do not conform with Minnesota statutes, that would be a legal report, and the editorial report might just say, these are the ways we recommend changing. Now, that's what I would read that to be, but in this context, I don't know.
So if that's, so if that's true, what Amy said would be, would be doable, then basically you'd be able to, if that was legal editorial mean, it would, that would somehow be able to tell the change.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what blue paper means, I'm sorry.
I don't either.
But, but you're saying something we've built up on highlights for the change.
So when we did school board policies, that's what we did, was we highlighted the changes, and then we knew that that was the change, and then we would just go off of it and approve those.
If we do it, that'd be great, uh, I personally, I'm gonna need a month. And if, if it's, is it gonna be on blue paper so that it's still highlighted or is it the copy that doesn't show up anymore? Because.
Right now, it's all blue, you know, and, and that's, and they do, and they do say here, while we agree to change through the code and become familiar with it, we think you have four quarters, end up to do review until you receive the report. So they must figure whatever's gonna be in the report has got enough value within it to where it's worth waiting for, you know, so. So once we get that, then we've got fifty days.
Once we get that, once we get that report.
Once we get that, we got sixty days to get back to them.
Well, if that report could be highlighted, if it changes, that would be awesome.
Right, if it comes that way, it won't be so bad if we have to go through every ordinance line by line.
Do you actually know part of the code that they already run the repackaging of?
Paul, are you still on?
Okay.
It also says a legal, American legal representative will contact us on a regular basis to assist us through the review periods. Does that mean they're gonna walk us through the changes?
But this is a whole big problem there, so then, in that, it's gotta be different thing, but I don't know what all of that mean.
So, they haven't highlighted any changes.
Not, that's, oh, that's the first one, that's why, that's why I said, that's what it's saying, it doesn't really good until we get the next copy.
Oh, okay, all right, so, but this is where this section kind of reflects some of the changes that they already done?
Well, that's, 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 that's the word, it's just a matter of whatever, that's why I'm thinking that legal and editorial must mean that wherever, kind of going through front, back of the, wherever there was a change, the legal, the legal and editorial.
Yep, 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 but, but this is a lot of stuff for me to go through. I have a feeling that a lot of the administrative stuff here are probably, I'm not gonna have to go through. I, because you probably would be the best person to go through anything that needs to be changed on the administrative end. Yes, no, maybe? I mean, if, if that's the case, what I really need is this now, and then when they have the, the legal and editorial, then that will just supplement. Because I can get, I mean, I, I have never really had an updated ordinance book. Ours has gotta be forty years old. And I would really like when, could I get a copy of this?
That's probably the update.
But let's just say, I don't want this.
Well, nobody's got that, I didn't. But that's, but that's, that is not our ordinance, that's, 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 that's the blue category, that's not the single.
That's not the what?
That is not our ordinance, that is what came from each year.
Yeah, but this is gonna possibly be our ordinance.
All right, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I'd like to get a little head start, shall we say, on this little light reading here. And that means I'm probably gonna need a copy now.
You can have it, yeah.
Oh, do you have another one?
No, but I, there's something, there's something in there that I need to look at.
I'm taking a look.
Yeah, there's something.
I, I wanna take a look at it.
Can I, you're getting this letter from your table, it's something like that, it's a draft, and it's there for you to get. That's the only draft that they're gonna get, and then the report that they're gonna provide will be referring to that draft. That's the way I'm reading it.
And, and, and that, and that, and that report will highlight the changes and whatever.
Right, we're more gonna like specify on page whatever, we changed this, and this is why, is the way that I'm reading this letter.
Well, so, can I know this? Okay.
But, but now what I'm saying is that going through that without having to report that for what's changed, otherwise you're reading.
Yes, but I can go, I can breeze through this and get a feel for it, and then when I look at the changes, it's gonna be easier for me to relate. There's only, I, literally, I'm guessing there might be ten ordinances that the council will, will want to seriously consider making substantial changes to. I, the most, that's my, that's my guess, based on what you've just said, on, you know, you know, people's interest in adding or whatever. But I do want to read this. And then I'll take a look at the, the legal, yeah, you're probably going crazy, I, I, I prefer that.
But for that, still nothing, okay, now then.
I want the legal and editorial when it comes to it, so then we can sit down and read it when we get a work.
And we can decide that at the next meeting, when we get it, and, and figure out what it's.
But, but, but so then, if, if what Beth was saying is correct, we're not gonna get another one of those, you don't think, you think that's, that's gonna be it? And then we're gonna get another editorial copy that has comments, which.
I don't even see an editorial copy, we're gonna get editorials as to the changes. That's the way I'm, so this may be the copy, and you'll apply the changes, the editorial comments to this.
Good.
Uh, it's gonna make it difficult to, for anyone to have a workshop without everyone having a printed copy too. I don't know, you know, if in fact you want to, to have any kind of a workshop.
And I would think if we want a printed copy, you don't want it like that either, you don't want it front and back, you want uh.
I don't care if it's front and back.
So, so you would be okay, you would flip over?
Yeah, just put it on white paper.
I, you know, I'm assuming when the editorial portion comes, it's gonna make reference based on the pages that are currently on here already. So let's say at page forty-seven, something, something, something happened.
Good.
And then, and everyone should be able to follow the law, I would guess.
Okay, so then, okay, so then, that, maybe that, based on that and based on what's there, what, could be, is this gonna be, the city, the city council wants to look through the editorial thing, let's say there's a, there's a hundred of them. How much, I mean, are we talking, we can, we can decide later, but I mean, are we talking, you think, six hours, two hours, ten hours?
Uh. I, I keep getting the hell out of these people, I don't know exactly how, I don't know if they're gonna get, if they're gonna vote it right down to which about A M. I don't know how much, how much detail those editorial comments are gonna go into.
I guess maybe a better question is, if you're reviewing that, how how much are we gonna request them to change, I mean, are, how much are we gonna second guess whatever's in there?
Well, okay, let's just use an example of the dog leashed or the dog restrained ordinance.
Good.
Ours says, right now, your dog has to be leashed and/or under the control of their owner. You know, because you told me that the new codification says the dog has to be leached and under control of their dog owner, not and/or. So they took out the word or, so there's not gonna be any more walk your dog around without a leash. They're, I'm basically on their own, they said, you gotta have your dog on a leash and under control with no comment from anybody. That's what they did, right?
Well, that's what, that's what that, but I can tell without, again, I looked at that one, one page, but yeah.
I mean, that's just one of the examples of this company coming in and saying, we're gonna update, to a certain degree, they took out one, one word, and it makes a huge difference. And how the city will apply its dog ordinance. You may want to have some discussion about that, I don't know if you would be, you know, unanimous or otherwise on voting out the word or.
But I guess overall, that's my point, how, how meticulous, to be, do we have to, that was, that was one page because it referenced to one page that was easy to look at, you all wanted it easy to look at the new one because it was right there. But, but that was, that was by knowing both citations, but I actually had to go through the table of contents and the index and whatever to find the right stuff. So how, please, do we, do we do that for everything, or do we care, or?
Well, you know, I'm looking at the operations and administration portion of this, the, the ordinance, this new codification. I don't have a whole lot to say about anything here, maybe other than abandoned property is the city attorney. A lot of the other stuff, personnel policy, the city ministry, the blah, 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 police department, fire department, uh, all these things. And we didn't even have a fire department anymore, but it's still here.
Right, that's some, some stuff we gotta get out, you know.
I mean, this way, that, this part, right, I might say as a city attorney, Lon, you take, you take the lead on saying, okay, some of this stuff truly has to go because the people who codify don't know we don't have a fire department anymore. But it's still in.
Well, well, and I would say the same thing as far as the police personnel policy, you don't have to have the police personnel policy in ordinance. And you shouldn't, because the number of times that were mandated to change policy uh, by the post board or by the legislature, it's ridiculous having it in ordinance, you should just have it in policy, right?
And then, and I think he actually, do we have a Henderson uh, police policy?
Yeah, he's got whatever, but that's right, I mean, we still have never, we never changed that or never, we weren't gonna change it when we codified the ordinance, so.
There, I mean, that's another example of things that maybe have to actually alter here totally and be endorsed as a separate police policy that the police agree to change, you know, from time to time as required. Without council, without council, not, not, not the kind of, ordinance that you, it's not even ordinance, you just change it, not the council act.
And that's, you know, and that would get me to, um, there's a couple of different spots in there where we talk about annexations and for separate ordinances for, for any of that, I mean, the property is ready in the, in the city, I mean, that was a, it's like those, those, there's, every ordinance from ten or eleven on, and there's franchise ordinances in there that, you know, they're specific to different places, you know. Would you even, uh, would you even worry about it? I mean, once you, uh, okay, we get that, number eleven is annexation of Westview Edition.
I, what, are you talking about chapter?
Chapter, chapter eleven.
This, this only goes up to chapter nine.
Fine, you're missing the blue page, or blue page gets coupled in there somewhere. But on, when I get back to you, chapter, chapter eleven is, uh, okay, chapter eleven is annexation of Westview Edition, Westview Edition has been in the city limits for forty years, fifty years. Do we, and nobody probably, anybody knew you would know Westview Edition yet.
Isn't that previous?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Where is it?
That's, that one's Westview, is uh, West, Westview, I heard it was uh, five lots across from the day school that Norrie ran at one point, that were outside the city limits and uh, doing that little sliver that he, that he put them in, and, but now they're in the city limits, but what, is there a point to have uh, an ordinance that talked about it once, once it, once that already was approved in the plan?
How old is it?
What?
The annexation.
Thirty-five years.
How much?
Thirty-five years?
Well, okay, all right. Well, that's something that I do, I mean, I don't know if we have to have it in the books anymore, it's, it's incorporated into the city, within the city limits of it.
Yeah, so, once the official city map gets dropped, it's.
Yeah, you could probably drop that off.
That's why I think we need to have a workshop to look through it.
Sounds like, yes, there's a lot of things that should be.
I mean, cause they're kind of the same thing, you're, okay, we got electrical, distribution, natural gas system, that's, that's well and good, that they're, when, when we started building, we had to pass those ordinances, but are they needed, are they needed in specific ordinances anymore? Because, you know, Barry first actually started those, uh, those um, different, I, and.
Where are you?
I'm on uh, I'm on, I'm on twelve and fourteen.
Do those, you know, have hand limit, like who supplies our electricity?
So that's specific agreements with those two companies.
So I mean, we, we probably would need those because, for example, Excel, would, would we want Minnesota Valley to all of a sudden start putting up lights?
But Minnesota Valley does go in a different part of town. Minnesota Valley is, Maple Ridge Edition is Minnesota, is Minnesota Valley, like.
Do we have that?
No, we don't, no, we don't have that in, so that, that would be, those, those, we basically established this one, and then we put the natural gas system on their label to get franchisees. You know, so, so that's, that's why you threw those out there, because at one point in the last ten, fifteen years, we're, we're we already had, we, we don't have, kind of like my, my core thought and point here, we don't have a cable TV ordinance in here that I see. You know, unless, unless I'm into, but we charge them franchisee by, they, they attach to the medical care program. So we put the electrical distribution and natural gas system in here so that we could use the same term to charge them franchisees. You know, and so, so, so that, yeah, that was, I don't know if you were there when Excel did that or whatever, but Dave Grubson was the guy from Excel, and then all of a sudden, we, you know, we had that, we came here, well, nobody else, and so we, we didn't, we tried not to say specifically Excel, but we said uh, we, so we threw it in there for the franchise, so, there wanted to be two other ones that I don't know if, if they would be, would be needed or not.
And that's that five counts that we collect.
Whatever, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, then we collect from both, from both Excel and, or maybe yeah, from both Excel and Minnesota Valley. But we collect the same thing from uh, from media accounts, but, but there's no specific uh, there's no specific ordinance here that, that says it, it says that we license.
Well, you know, the only thing I can say is I don't, I don't know what, what the chapter twelve actually worded like, if I have ever used it before.
Continue with practice.
I know it is, but I'm not gonna read it right now. All I'm saying is, I do know that some, some franchise agreements do require that you have a ordinance that allows a city to enter into a franchise agreement for energy.
Good.
So, I mean, I, I, I don't know what this one says, but I do, in passing, believe that you have to actually have an ordinance on the block that gives the, the city the right to enter into franchise. And that, that the franchisee or, or whatever, the energy company is the one that requires it.
So that, that could, so that could be the point of having different ones where they get, because, because uh, because cable TV is, you can have as many cable TV companies as anybody that want to come here, they all, they're regulated by federal and state, and they all got to pay the same amount. So basically, they just, cable TV has to come in and get licensed, and that's what they have to come in and get. Whereas electric and gas, um, in order to charge them and do that regulation or whatever, because, because both electric and gas are regulated by Minnesota T C, and, but locally, in order to get the money from them, I think that's why we have to, that's why we have to.
So that would make it, I, you know, I completely agree with that, but you know, you do, you've got a cable television under, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's under chapter three. The tax about cable television, I don't know what it says, I could read it, but, but are you familiar with what that is, is that something?
Not really, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we just took that and just took that agreement and moved it over there, so, so, so then if that's the case, you know, the staff probably know that you can compare to an L with them, if, should we have on the chapter threes, we have a nine and ten, and the nine should be electrical, and the ten should be uh, and, and the ten, and the ten should be natural gas, because I'm having a separate chapter, chapter twelve and fourteen, but.
Uh, maybe, don't know, um, that, that's something you could explore, but that's, you know, these are things like the questions that you propose to the people who pay. As, as far as, as, as um, how, how this should be organized to be most co, most cohesive for the city. And maybe they'd say, yeah, that's a good idea, put it on, on their, you know, chapter three. Or they'll say, no, we really need the electrical um, and the natural gas systems, in their own separate, separate chapter. I don't, but I do know that you could say that we could pose some question back to them too, and they would do, uh, because they have resources.
During this window, we got, we got sixty day window or whatever, we, we can ban the gas before, after that sixty day window, when you call them, they're gonna, they're gonna charge.
So, uh, time is of the essence, and once we get this, this legal and editorial report to get move on getting this done. Yes?
Yeah, I was thinking, if, if we're gonna make any modifications, otherwise we just let it go. And I guess, but I don't see any of the stuff that I got from them, and I, and this, these guys are in Indiana or someplace, so they probably don't have, uh, anything specific on, on, on state law. But I would guess they leave that up to you. At any point, are we gonna have, once we come up with whatever's gonna be, we think it's gonna be the final ratified document? Do you think we have to have a hearing on it?
Uh, for any point more additional ordinance or significant changes, amendments to ordinances we may have to.
Okay, well, I mean, just example, you threw out there about the dog, the can, the hour, that, that, if, if, if that, if that, if the city council wanted to do that, is there the potential enough to have, uh, have a, have a hearing?
Uh, you know what? It might be. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if to tell you about that. Um, that's gonna be a council decision.
But no, I, I mean, if, if, if that one word does, then to me, there's no doubt that the whole, uh, the whole, I think you can add an example.
No, no, no. I think that the dog ordinance is very significant because it changes the, from not a leash law to a leash law.
Right, so if that one point changes, that's gonna be the whole thing?
Yeah, and I, I think a lot of the other stuff that we may find here is changes that they recommend will not, will be clearly insignificant in terms of the actual meaning of the law. Meaning the ordinance. That's what I suspect is what's gonna happen. Dog ordinance one is an example of, it's not nothing. It's not just cleaning up the language, it's changing the meaning.
Okay.
And, and, you know, when that kind of thing happens, uh, but it's up to the council, I mean.
It's up to the council to decide whether, would I have a hearing or?
Well, I mean, i- if it's gonna be an amendment, a significant one, then I think you're gonna have to have a, have, have a, a public hearing on it. But I don't think you're gonna find too many of these things that are that significant. I'd be surprised. More, more likely, there's things that just simply have to be Xed out because the people are in Indiana. They don't know we don't have a fire department. In the books. Just as an example.
Okay.
So in the next thirty days, we'll.
We should get something.
We'll get something again.
Somewhere around early March, we should get something.
We should, we should, we'll be meeting before then, right?
We'll be meeting on the twentieth or something. Yeah, but if it comes out in early March, I mean, the, I guess that, you want me to, if, if that comes out in early March, somehow, and if, if, if there's no online links or whatever, we just bite in the bullet then and I get the editorial and they copy to that and take that and double side that and they copy them all and get it to you, is that probably the way to go? I mean, if it's, if it's, uh, if it ends up being three hundred pieces, three hundred pieces of paper or more, it just.
Just, just email us and have us pick it up up here. Have us stop up and pick it up.
The, the, the editor, whatever we're calling that, the administrative thing, as well as whatever they're using for. So, maybe, yeah, maybe that's the email, get it all out, give you guys a week or two whenever it comes in, take a look at it, and then decide. Hopefully it comes to the next city council meeting, and then you can actually talk about what you wanna do at the next city council meeting. And then if you need a workshop or two, now, stand to do it rather than, I, because I, I don't think you wanna make, you wanna make it a, a full discussion. I mean, I already blew this crazy out of the water talking about this. I mean, I don't think you wanna make it a full discussion at a city council meeting. I mean, just have another technical meeting to talk.
Why couldn't we tonight set a workshop? Like, after the next council meeting, and if we don't need that, we'll cancel.
Okay. You gotta, you gotta be in mind, right, you know?
Well, no, like, I mean, like, the week of March twenty-second, probably.
I forgot my phone, so I don't.
Any day is fine for me. Something usually Tuesday and Wednesdays, I guess.
I can make anything work. So can I? I will. So like the twenty-second of March?
As far as, oh, that looks good.
Awesome. What about you?
Well, you're saying the twenty-second of March?
Twenty-second of March, theoretically, we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the next information, and then everybody will, or two weeks prior to the twenty-second, hopefully we got everything. Everybody will have the editorial, editorial information, and they'll have that, and then we'll try to go through as much of it as we can.
Okay, but the twenty-second is not the day of your, your actual city council meetings, right?
Yes, it will be, yeah.
So you're having this meeting after the city council meeting?
Oh, yes, yes, this will be after the twenty.
So.
Not on the same day. No, no, no. No, no.
The next city council meeting is March seventeen.
Say again?
March seventeen.
Okay, so this is just, just, just a workshop. Starting at my time, seven, seven o'clock again?
No, well, I, I would prefer earlier, but.
I would too.
I'm good with earlier too.
Right?
So six, could we go six?
Four?
Five? Four, okay.
Or, I mean, I'm.
How many time works for me? Five?
Okay, five P M, but I, I'm, I can make myself available a little faster.
Just fine.
I didn't want it to be after the city council meeting, but it's gonna be. So five P M, here.
That's, that's assuming everything gets in my head like that.
And if, if it's not, if it's not all in, we'll just.
We just, yeah, we'll, we'll cancel it at seventeen, because we don't have the stuff here.
Right.
Okay, realistically, I do wanna take a look at some of this stuff in line. You can review some of this administrative stuff, and you can just say, mix it, mix it. It's not there anymore, blah, blah, blah. I mean, if, if you could just take a little section. Quickly say, no, you don't need it. But I'll review it as much as I can, so that I'm prepared to.
Should have Doug wrote all of all that, so.
You know what? He did not. I asked him.
I didn't, I didn't.
He said, he did not do that. Oh.
I don't know. It's, it's forty years old. It was, I, I thought, well, that must have been made in this month.
Who did? It was, it may have been made in, seriously. Doug does that, and he said, no, we didn't do that.
He did that?
He's been involved with some, some amendments, you know, ordinance amendments.
Oh, he did a couple of qualifications.
Well, minor ones.
Okay, because that's when they started, eighty-three, and your dad, and Marjorie, and both, and right, I wasn't, with your dad, Marjorie, and Ralphie. And they were all in the, they were, they were on some kind of committee, and I'm sure it took three years before it, I mean, they're, right before they finally got whatever they were doing, done. So it must have been, it must have been Ralph, Ralph, Ralph that was on there.
Doug says, oh, but when he started here, the, the or, the, the ordinance book looked like an abstract.
Right, I still got that. So.
I don't, I mean, but he was not involved in your dad's whatever. That has to be taken. I mean, it's here. He didn't, he didn't.
Because then.
He's not responsible.
Because, and I sure didn't type with, or Louise didn't type with, Marjorie Haas or somebody. I'm sure your dad didn't type with, you know, so. So.
All right, are we ready to move on to the city administrator report?
All right, all right, sir. Uh, not much. I think we talked about everything, most of it, nothing going on with the levy stuff. The signs in the air, up to April, spring, and up to sea. I think I mentioned, I mentioned, I mentioned the state superintendent, park superintendent, gonna be off for probably ten weeks. We'll see. You gotta go in on Monday to find out whether he's healthy enough to do, to do his next step with COVID, yeah, for something. Uh, he did say that Tom Post, that guy's coming every so often picking some stuff up. I haven't went up there to see exactly how much to go on. So they don't have the, 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 the spring. So, the plan for still moving the rest of the year would be then to keep paying, you know, what he's doing.
Uh, Rich Distance is gonna handle the bulk of the stuff for, that Bruce is doing. Um, and, and we're just gonna have to split the rest of it up as best we can between James and whoever else we can get for part-time city staff and contractors and myself, and see what, uh, still we can get put together and kind of go from off the month. I guess this is, this is the fourth or fifth time already that we've done this in the last few years, so I guess we'll get by. Um, park committee meeting is the tenth of May, March. Uh, so then also the community building ground and the building maintenance and all that kind of stuff, we're gonna have meetings with these checklists in March. You see that later, that, uh, we take those off because uh, street park superintendent won't be around to have those reports done. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with our insurance person, comes out once a year to go through and see, uh, to see where we're at with all our policies and whatever, and I'll give them all the stuff that we approved last year. So hopefully, uh, he'll come up with new stuff, I'm sure, to do with that here. Okay, ordinance kind of occasionally talked about, Metro and Metro, they'll, they'll be, they took over from Jaguar. They still plan on being here March or April. Wire, I think, is like, be here March or April. Up, 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 it's, 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 it's.
All right. And.
Go on, I don't have.
Not on that. And the city council for the utility committee. Um, I guess we met. Um, we established a second meeting and to do it monthly, we established a schedule. And Randy and I are trying to learn about city bills, which is.
Water.
Confusing, water. Yeah. Oh, um. I guess there's nothing else to report on that.
Did you have anything on?
I think it's good preparation. I'm trying to learn.
It's a work in progress.
I mean, there were some, there were some errors this past month. And we're trying to figure out why we had high readings and why we had super low readings.
Was it the meter readings or?
We have a lot of outdated meters that need replacing, and Lon's working with two companies to, over a series of years, to replace.
I guess that probably bears reporting, that, uh, yeah. On, on the last, uh, thing that we sent out, uh, we knew going in, and I have, I don't think, well, committee has a net, and I have not taken active involvement in any kind of utility stuff for three or four years. Uh, just assume that it was all coming out, and, and you have not ever met. Yeah, so, so they haven't met for at least four, fifteen, you know, since Dennis done the committee for two years. And probably longer than that. He said, he said he thinks it's back on comedic duty.
Oh, the last time I, was when, last medical, so.
It's been a while. And so, uh, uh, but that's, that's kind of me to hear the various, how some of that can reconcile. Uh, but there's, there's been, you know, there's been at least ten or twelve meters that haven't worked right for a long time. And so, when, when is it gonna be replaced? When will it be out next week, next week, next month? Well, Alex, no, no, you forgot, we don't have, we don't have any. And so, we got, we basically have zero meters to replace anything. And part of the holdup on not getting any shipment in is the company switched, uh, switched representatives. The guy came out ten days ago when I was, when I was in here, and said, well, we can't update your laptop, we can't do any of this or that or whatever, because well, we, we've been on remote reads or at least twenty years. Like, and we switched the system out maybe ten or twelve years ago. We started a whole meter replacement process for all four or some meters about ten or twelve years ago. And so, at one, over probably a four or five year time period, they've all been, they've all been replaced, and now, now we're getting on some of the old ones that fifteen years ago. So, but that's way too long that they're talking about, but again, uh, the, the, uh, so we can't, we can't replace the existing ones, the remote reads anymore. Uh, because they don't have the, the future meters that we're gonna get aren't gonna have the remote thing on. Because right now, when we, uh, everybody's got a remote going, James drives around. If, uh, whenever he drives around, and it picks up the signal from the remote, then it, it shows up with his system, he takes that stuff, puts it into the computer that's, that's read. So, we don't, we don't go house to house, just drive around, and it's all on. So it is, but how the future ones are gonna be, and I'm pretty sure probably how Excel and most of those other companies are now, these new ones that we buy are all gonna be, uh, as soon as they're in twenty-four seven, so that they're gonna be tied. Once you get their meter number or their read number, it's gonna go directly into our system, so that, yeah, you won't have to be. No, I mean, so that ultimately, we got twenty-five of those that we're gonna get replaced this year. You know, and I'll come to, I'll come to you guys probably in, uh, in April with a request to do like, last year, we did that replacement. They got a break because we told them we're gonna get five hundred meters over three or four years, so then they, they charged, they charged at the bulk price rather than charging four hundred dollars per meter to put one in. So, we're, we're working on that right now. But so that that would mean that, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three, they probably end up getting another hundred and fifty meters, you know, and but, so by two thousand and twenty-three or twenty-four, what James is doing now as far as driving around is gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna be obsolete or unneeded, and everything is gonna be in-house here. Why they got off? I, I just don't know why some of these, there, I said it was five percent, and I, I have no comparison base to know if five percent is, is, uh, is, is it that way all the time? And just for all people, uh, saw what went out there and complained, or whether five percent for some reason somehow, uh, is way out of line. But more so when we got done, it was like twelve percent of the users either somehow got screwed up for low reads, no meters, uh, whatever, you know, so there were more, there were more problems than just those thirty-five or forty higher reads. And with those higher reads, I mean, we, we knew what they were, and I answered and go now right away, because there's a report you can pull out, it's got all, got everything now in there for months, so basically, we took the top thirty-five or forty, compared what they had for the last twelve months, and if normally your reading is three thousand, and this time it was eight, uh, she took, we, in-house, we can't change any reads. I mean, the readings are whatever the readings are. Somebody's gotta prove that they're wrong before we can change them. But we can, so for water usage, but we can, I guess, the sewer usage, it is supposed to be based on your minimum uses for what you have per sewer. So all those thirty-five or forty, she, if, if it was, if, if you don't have a three and it was a seven, you made it a four or something like that. So we charged those forty or whatever they were for their, for their sewer part, but the lower half of the sewer, nothing. But I think if, if the rest, we probably didn't wanna know all that. But hopefully we get that now figured out. Once, once these guys know what they're looking for each month, uh, we can, we can get that. There, there were some other old builds that were on there that came on a report, and that's, hasn't changed. I guess probably changed in their balance sheet, but there were some old entries that should have got taken off for, for, so that our water and sewer balances are gonna go down some in two thousand and twenty because we had a few that were off. And there are a couple other ones that I, that we're gonna pull out that, uh, we may end up putting on as, as deferred assessments. Uh, you know, as we move, as we move this process along as well.
So am I kind of right in summarizing also that in the past, uh, those, when there were adjustments to be made, the adjustment was just kind of made? Versus now the auditor is saying it's gotta come with the committee?
Correct. Well, it always was supposed to come to the committee.
Yeah.
But the committee never met, so that bas- basically how the process is supposed to work, okay, James or whoever, somebody does the read, now the read gets taken and it gets entered into the system. That, that, that's a utility person. Now we have a clerical or staff person that, uh, actually hits the button that says, check it. So then, from there, um, when there's discrepancies, the staff person is supposed to check, which we did twice. It's supposed to check, are, some of these look high, are they correct? And so then, the utility person's job then is to go ahead and verify that those meters, that those readings that were put in are, are correct. And so then, the utility person's job then is to go ahead and verify that those meters, that those readings that were put in are, are correct, so. I, what, what happened in the past, I guess we really don't know, but if, if on reviewing that, if the readings are still correct. And like this time, we just on our own, because we didn't have a committee meeting, on our own, we changed those thirty-five or whatever it was, uh, we adjusted those sewer, 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 that sewer down. How that's supposed to work is, that's supposed to go to the committee, committee's supposed to review them and say, yes or no, we should, uh. We should, we should make those adjustments, uh, we, we already were like three weeks behind on that, and we, you know, we didn't have any information. And go to background to run that by committees, but that's how it'll be in the process, this time we met last Friday, it was two, two weeks after the bill was. You know, here it's gonna be a more streamlined, we'll say the utility person reads on Sunday, they're calculating on Monday, and then on Monday night, uh. Uh, the committee will meet and check everything all over, then the next, then on Tuesday, the, uh, utility person will calculate or maybe Monday night they'll calculate. And on Tuesday, they'll go into the, the, they'll, they'll, they'll go, they'll go into the mail, and get, and get sent out. So, so during that, in that process, at least four people will have eyes on, on everybody's, uh, reading, whether you get, whether you could actually go through it. And, and I know four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fifty of them each time, who knows, but. You should be able to get pretty good at it, because you can do a report that's got all, uh, all four hundred and forty uses from top to bottom. You can do another report that's got what the usage was for the past whole month, so, and, you know, and I think now those guys have seen what those reports look like, and. Should, and once they, once they, if they get those reports like a day or two sooner, um, they should be able to go through and figure out what kind of question they got, but. Just to, and I think it's way too long, but, I mean, really, you're, you're, yeah, you're bored, let me do it, but, some things. Where, where we know that, uh, there was a flaw in our system, is that. We would, we would print out whatever we print out, that would get put into the water and into the sewer, that's, that's what would show up in the account receivable. But if somebody, if somebody after the account receivable book got put in, said, I ran my pool this time, adjust my sewer, or this, 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 or this happened. We would just make the sewer adjustment on, or staff would make sewer, sewer adjustment on the spot, but then. Do that in fund, in the utility billing program, but not in the fund accounting program, which is where the account receivables are, so. At the end of the year then, I think what the auditor's always did, basically, when I talked to these lanes, is that, say everything is off by a couple of three thousand dollars. Because of those same changes that you made for start, for actually somebody paying less than what they were charged, because we have like the justice goal.
Now it should be all.
Now, now, it should be, it should be month by month, that we've got it all done, and then, if somebody else is printing off, and it could be caught up over there. And so the balances that are in the water and sewer, and, uh, and in the water and sewer, which would be correct.
So moving on to the financial, the end of the month, January twenty twenty-one.
So I don't, so I don't get all bent out of shape here again.
I'll make them look secure.
But, but you're, but you're moving here in the balance of one million, zero, six, nine, four, nine, four, sixty.
So we have a motion to approve the end month. Flash file. A second, in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Well, good, thanks, at least, at least you have so, uh. But, I did look at you so bad that, uh, one of you wouldn't make the motion. I'm, I'm sorry for that, also.
Yeah, it's fine. No problem, we all held those.
So the bill, while we're looking for, looking for a motion to approve bill. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the bill, all in favor, so aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Old business? Any new business? We'll move on to the meeting schedule.
For adding the one on the twenty-second?
Yep.
And somebody asked before, but, uh, I did leave the notice in here, that is the night of a city council meeting, so that'll be a full night for the board of review.
What is that, Florida thing?
Uh.
The, the process?
The accepted thing, yeah.
That's the night of the?
City council, the, the city council meeting on, it's April, April, excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
And, yeah, I, I don't have any dates for May for the checklist reviews and whatever, so we'll just have to see when our season part schedule gets back.
Um, probably wanna add fire commission on there, okay, uh, the third Monday of March.
Fifteen?
Oh, I thought that was the twenty-second.
Yeah, the fifteenth, yeah.
It's not, twenty-first. Okay, so this, this is gonna be. It's Monday, March first, do we have a time to walk? Was that at four thirty, or what time?
The, the.
The payroll? Oh, not payroll, utility.
You're on utility, yeah.
Payroll, nothing?
Payroll, whenever, that's whenever the heat gets, is available, so, so far.
And the parks is canceled, you said?
No, the parks is good, uh, those two in the bottom, I got rescheduled to May. And I don't know which bag. On the bottom. Checklist for community facilities and city equipment. Those originally were gonna be in March. But Bruce is gone.
So I guess we'll be looking for a motion on the revised meeting schedule then. There's some more changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised schedule.
I'll second.
The motion is. Excuse me, you all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Great job.
And Mark, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, hopefully we get that right, so.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Good.
Could you, Ron?